Six o'clock, I call a meeting to order. I did not get a question out this month. Next month it will be, who is your favorite teacher? What grade and what subject? So we think you got a month to think about it. So everyone's here except for Rachel. Additionals to the agenda?
There are none.
No agenda? Approval of the agenda?
Some.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move on to public comment. We have one person who has asked to speak to us tonight and that's Amy Jo Gabley. And since we have new board members tonight, I just wanted to kind of go through our procedures, just so you all hear what procedures are. This won't count into Amy's time, so. Remark should be addressed to the board as a whole. Even when communicating difficult issues, important remain respectful, dignified in our communication. A five-minute time limit is established for each participant. And we only have one tonight, so we'll do that there. Maximum of twenty, we have more. In general, the board will not respond to the information received during the public comment. I want the board to hear. Order to communicate in effective manner, please keep public communication to its main points, et cetera. Lastly, the superintendent will follow up with all participants of public comment. So at that point, I'd ask Amy, Jo.
Thank you for having me to speak with you today. I'm speaking on both the EL proposed reduction and also speaking on Dave Wilkie's behalf along with myself on the foreign language. Just a reminder that we were in this seat a year ago with this statement issue back in April 26th. I have sent the new board members link for the video of the that day. I mean, this year how it's different from last year, yes, we are down by four students. I did have three tests proficient last year as well. We had some move out, others come back in. We also do have two long-term EL students that their families declined services this year. I still have to test them. So the numbers are a bit lower. I do still have students in every grade from kindergarten to fifth grade and then seventh grade and ninth grade with three very much newcomer students. And that is elementary and high school. My other non-teaching expectations that are still things that I'm doing, all the translating and interpreting, even for the non-ELL students, for any of the Spanish-speaking families. I have not done any this year yet, but preschool screenings. I am usually asked to do the new student registration of Spanish-speaking families and doing the screenings, which I expect to do the proficiency screenings, but it is on the to-do list. I'm the contact person for families and our own staff, nurse, office staff, to communicate with families. I provide staff professional development. I presented at our academy day just a couple of weeks ago. That is required for teacher licensure. And I'm also the migrant liaison. And again, internally like that to be a person that the family is comfortable with or knows. And so that's extended from my position. Switching gears to the foreign language, the reduction of Spanish down to a point five and eliminating German. We have myself licensed for K-12 for Spanish. And we have proposed looking into elementary offerings. And I know it's about a battle of, you know, are we offering anything new? Are we just trying to reduce? But knowing that I do have that as a potential draw for families to have Spanish at the elementary level. We used to require, and this is before I was hired on 12 years ago, seventh grade was required to have a quarter of Spanish and eighth grade was required a quarter of German. And then in 2020, 2021, we offered required sixth grade exploring languages where I did Spanish, German, and French. And that was an AB, so it was a quarter class.
You have one minute left.
Okay. And so reducing those numbers to those feeder classes in the middle school, we are not generating as much numbers in registration. However, we as teachers, you know, kind of feel out our students to see who's planning to register for the next year. And it has been repeated that we are informed that there isn't interest. We used to get a number sheet of the preliminary registration numbers, but we've not seen that in the past years, just recent, maybe three years. So we are not seeing definitively that it's not interest, that it could be the scheduling with block schedule, trying to make sure that they are taking classes that are going to advance them in the future as well. And last comment, or just in general on this proposal, that it was all focused on staffing, that there are no administrative or curriculum cuts in this current proposal. For your, for your knowledge to ponder. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. We want to hear first from our treasurer. Any comments?
Everything was pretty much normal. I didn't see anything really jump out. Something interesting that jumped out to me was, we bought ten monarch or caterpillar larvae. Eggs or larvae. And I wish they'd done that when I was in school. I'm sure they watched them hatch or.
Food service order.
Actually, I didn't look at the bill. Could be though. Let's hope that's enough. Otherwise, everything was normal.
You want to talk about hires and resignations?
So a couple of things that I do want to put to you. The first two that are on as hires are positions that have been open all year. Ken Ozendorf has accepted the Director of Buildings and Grounds position. And Victoria Shay is, she is a social worker that came on board to fill the absence of Jen Wors. If you remember, Jen was, her role was, her license was actually a special education and pretty much, she had a mental health degree as well. But her service model was very, very much in alignment with social work. And so we were able to find a licensed social worker to fill that position. And Victoria is primarily going to be at the elementary, which is a little bit of change in model so that the two individuals, we have Christie Zimmer, who is part of West Central Education District, and then Victoria Shay will be our employee. But they will be kind of designated, they'll still intertwine so they can have some crossover support, but it'll be a little bit more targeted building, but per building. So we're excited to have her on board. The others are some of our PAC staff hires. And you'll see that there was quite a bit of turnover last month to this month. But also as, as Chris O'Brien gets on board, she's finding where there's needs and where we need to have some additions. So that's where those PAC hires are as well. There are not any donations at this point.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Ron, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Can I just take a, is this Ken over here?
This is Ken.
Want to recognize him?
Yep.
That we all look at him and see who he is, if you don't know already.
And do not email Kay Ozendorf unless you want to have a budget discussion. We're going to have to field a couple of, wait a minute, I think this is automated almost.
On to communication items, first of all, administrative report.
Yep. So the first thing I just want to do is just acknowledge, again, we've had just an absolutely crazy winter year. And our bus drivers, our snowclaw drivers, our, the individuals that plow our parking lots and our, the, it's just been unbelievable. And for our maintenance staff to try to keep our sidewalks clean, it's just been a task. So I just wanted to take an extra minute to say thank you. Unfortunately, knowing that tomorrow we're going to have another wrong, why not? So just a thank you to acknowledge the work because it's, it's a lot. And I know that it's, it's been heavy. So thank you. Legislatively, I just wanted to let everybody know that I had the opportunity today to be at the Capitol. And I met with Senator Howe, Leader Demuth, and Representative Anderson. With the redistricting, Paul Anderson picks up a portion of our, just a small, I think he has like 695 constituents in the Painesville School District. But it really was a nice opportunity to just visit about how I can serve as a resource to them to understand how information that they're receiving might impact our school district. And I really do feel strongly that they are there to listen. It really does make a difference when, as a superintendent, if I go to visit somebody that I don't live in their, in their area, I get a polite nod, but it's not the same. They really do want to hear from people that live where they are serving. And so it really was a nice opportunity. So I just wanted to share that I had that chance, a chance to do that today. And we are, as a district, so we're a member of, we participate in MREA and C. And both of those organizations do advocate on our behalf. And there are times, today didn't, coordination-wise, didn't work with our schedules for Thomas and I to go down together. But MREA and MASAA along with MSP updates that are set, so we'll be down again. Again, so one of the things that they will ask is, can you share how does this information pertain to your, to the district? And what does that mean financially for you? So they'll ask us those questions and I think it gives them some firsthand kind of, oh, here's the impact. So we'll be down a couple of times yet this year. So just, that's my, the technical administrative update. The revenue and expenditures have been updated. You will see, again, I'm not going to, unless there are questions, those continue to be linked in. And you can follow the, the expenditures and the revenues year throughout the course of the year. Again, kind of paying attention to the current year-to-date versus the previous year-to-date. You can see those variations. If anybody has, so again, what is complete in the month that we're looking at this is the January 31st tab. Because we're now mid-February, so January 31st is closed out. Are there any questions or comments on any of those? Again, those are becoming kind of a standard document that I'm just going to continue to share. But if there's any questions, I will answer those or defer to Carrie and we can answer those questions that may have. Anything on revenue or expenditures?
Any questions?
So then, moving on down to Frida or FFA alumni, come on, can you come on up? You had requested a brief moment.
I am president of the Painesville, FFA alumni supporters. And I have two checks here. One is for 150. And the other one is for 250 for electricity and the permit that we use out on our plot. So.
Thank you. Wonderful. And I, if I might add just a quick second. I know last year we had a presentation about the irrigator. And I do want to just acknowledge the hard work that your, the Alumni Association is doing, looking for grants and bringing up funding. And they're just really doing a nice job advocating on behalf of the FFA organization, the alumni organization to keep things off the cost of the school district, but yet improve the plot.
Yes, we're looking at a new irrigate system. I don't know all about it, but it's going to, they're looking at bringing the irrigator and so it goes all the way to the end of the field instead of everybody changing their schedule. And it will be put onto home systems. So even run it from your house instead of going out there when it's, all the bugs are out there. But, or to find somebody to run it at night. So.
So thank you for that work. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Board members just know that'll be formally acknowledged at next month's board meeting, on the consent agenda. And then my final communication item this evening is just a school board appreciation. So February is school board appreciation month. And I just wanted to take a second to say thank you, myself and really just from our community. Serving on the school board is, it's a lot of time and a lot of effort that I don't think people always understand. And I think our new board members probably have a, a new understanding of the work and the time and the learning that comes into being a board member. So thank you for your time and support to our school district. It's appreciated. Move it on to committee organizations. I hope no, there's any.
I'll just make, I want to make one comment. Just, the school district sent me to a training session last Saturday. Big School Board Association for Officers, it was very good. I think it's good that any time any of us can get more training, it's positive. And there'll be another one coming up in March that I'll be attending. So just so the public knows that we are not just sitting here nights, but we're out there trying to get better.
And I don't have anything from our student representatives, so hopefully we can update next time.
Hey, no old business, I see. So we go on to new business.
So attached is the revised budget for, this is a document that you're very familiar seeing for old board members. New board members, what I'll just kind of carry, show you is that this is a document that really keeps, it's a very generalized summary of our funds. And it is, I'm going to pull this tab up to present. And I guess probably the, the most important line and what we really kind of track and follow the most consistently is that top line. And that's really where you'll see that number transferred over into our budget decision-making. But this is where, when we set our initial proposed budget, it'll be in this format. You know, there are multiple ways that we can, we can look at this, but this is just the, the running tally of our initial budget, our revised budget, and then after audit when it's finalized. So you'll see that the information here is consistent with what I shared with you at our work session last the middle of the month. So we do need a motion to revise the budget mid-year through. And it'll likely come up probably May, again, before it's finalized through the audit.
Is there a motion to approve the?
Make a motion.
Gerald makes a motion. Second, Ron's second. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
All right.
Twenty-three, twenty-four budget update.
So if you think back to the presentation, and I, in hindsight, I should have linked in kind of our timeframe of what we're, where we're at in looking at the big schedule, but I will do that next month. So where we are right now is to, to take a look at, what do we need to do? And what decisions need to be taken into consideration as we develop the budget for, for 2324? So what you're going to see is, and this is again, the same document that I went over in the middle of February. And you will not see, again, there's no reduction taken into consideration until I have direction from the board with what area, where, what you would like us to take into consideration in developing the budget. We do, I do continue, continue to have concern about our deficit budget in the big picture. I don't, in, in watching the legislature, there are a lot of bills moving forward that have very significant financial impacts. Now, do I think they're all going to pass? No, I don't. Do I think that many of them, some of them will pass? Absolutely. Do I think our funding is going to be adequate to cover it all? I don't. You know, I did just some general calculations and at five percent, that's approximately $311,000 for our school district. One of the initiatives that is, is moving forward that would have a direct impact on our district has a cost of about $268,000. Well, that would leave us $35,000 in additional revenue. So again, I, I recognize that we are being, taking a very conservative approach. But I think we have to take a conservative approach as we look at a number of unknowns. So you will see that I am suggesting for a reduction considerations, not filling a science position that we have a retirement for. I do continue to see a change in foreign language. One of the considerations that we've talked extensively about is by having one language instead of two, does that give us an opportunity to grow that Spanish program instead of having students choosing between Spanish and German? That's, that was a big portion of our discussion. I can certainly share the data around numbers for both the foreign language. And as, as Amy Jo Gabley talked about, the EL caseload, I certainly am willing to share additional information about that. These are all starting points for our discussion. You know, one of the pieces from a, especially around the EL discussion, you know, I think there's some things that we, we have to continue looking at, whether, when you see scheduling opportunities and classroom supports. And those classroom supports, I think we need to look at regardless of the structure and the FTE because it is when you have a position that's shared across the building and you've got, you have students that, that need access to language skills that they don't have. So what are we, what are we doing with that? And how are we analyzing that? And how are we looking at that? Regardless of what happens with that position. Because I think that's an ongoing area that, that we need to look at. I also am taking a look at the EL supports over the course of the last few years. Not just last year and the year before. I do see that that FTE has been fluctuant and it's varied over the course of years. So those are some things that I just wanted to kind of share that have come into the discussion and the dialogue around that recommended reduction. You'll see that by looking at those areas in addition to some continued areas that we look to evaluate, I've got some anticipative retirements that may have some cost savings with rehire. There are, you know, one of the things that we've not banked into, into reductions at all is the fact that we, we need to evaluate where kindergarten and first grade numbers are. Our kindergarten registration is out right now. And I think you guys have, your evening rep is coming up. March 9th, thank you. So we'll, we'll have more information very soon about the number of kids that register. One of the things that really does become tricky, and I think we saw this last year, families change their mind. And we have move-ins and that changes how our, our classroom structures are. So those things absolutely are in our forefront as we look at those numbers. We continue to look at the block schedule and how the block schedule affects middle school and high school staff that are shared. When you have, especially when we have staff that are traveling between meetings, what is the cost efficiency of that? And are there decisions that we need to make about when staff go? How they go? How they're shared? Those types of things. And I, and I say that because if we had, we, we're not a size where it really makes a lot of sense to have middle school-specific staff and high school-specific staff in the same building. So we, we do really share staff, but then when we're crossing over and sharing at the elementary as well, we certainly have some different time constraints that come into play. And the other thing that, and that's the, the shared staff with the block schedule and travel time that we're taking a look at. So those things taken all into consideration, what I would ask for is, is for the board to consider approximately $200,000 in expenditure reductions for our 2324 school year.
Ron?
Okay, Rick, I guess I have a question. And I knew the school board, and I know we sit here with rose-colored glasses. So I can't ask a question regarding block scheduling at the meeting here. It seems like I've got questions regarding learning German and Spanish, but I'm not at liberty to ask questions. Now I have to do it after the meeting?
No, you can add, well, I.
I guess, it just seems when I, when I sit at these meetings, I have questions, but then I find out the answer afterwards. I guess the question I have is, do they still have the German program where the kids go? They have the option to go to Germany, the junior and senior? Has that been cut or? Am I getting myself in trouble by asking questions, I guess?
No, no, that's fine. You can ask questions. I think the, so we did have foreign language trips. The last, and I'm going to look to Dave when the next.
The last one was supposed to be 2019 and then COVID.
COVID kind of raised, they usually do it every other year, correct?
We actually, we are, I have a group going through.
Yeah.
Down in July, because they, the student group chose to go during the summer. Actually, it's the first one that I've had where they've done that.
So I can be asking these questions now? I mean, so how many kids, I know COVID ruined a lot of things. But before COVID, what was kind of the average number of kids that you have? Did you have at least a dozen or 20?
Yeah, it would, it would be under, under, under 25, in between 15, 25, depending on the level.
Okay.
I think the, the thing about the requiring with, with the language is that, you know, it gave the kids an opportunity to take the course and actually understand that it's not as hard as it seems. As that perspective, the perspective coming into that is that they may not, they're kind of like, kind of overwhelmed coming into that language sometimes.
Well, and I can't turn back the clock, but one of my biggest regrets is I was one quarter away from going to Germany and I quit. And it really bothered me. I missed out. There's, at that time, it was like nine hundred and fifty dollars to go. And my biggest fear was, I didn't feel like I, I'd learned German well enough. And that I wasn't prepared. Well, it turned out the kids that went, they actually knew quite a bit of English over there. So it wasn't as bad, but it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I guess the other question, I don't know who decides on this block scheduling. That was one of the things I guess I was really questioning. If we're looking into that, I've heard positives and negatives about it. But I don't want to step on anybody's toes here, but I, I just feel sometimes as a board, it, you know, I know we're all professionals sitting here, but it feels like nobody wants to answer any or ask any tough questions, so to speak.
So surveys have been sent out about the block schedule. And I, I can absolutely, as I mentioned, I'll, I can track the data for the numbers. And I can do that over the course of the last few years, so you can see the trend. But the, the block schedule that, the survey that went out was really to understand what are the pros and the cons of the block schedule. And as a result of that, one of the changes that has taken place for next year is that in the middle school, so for sure grades six and seven, English and math will happen every other day all year long. Instead of having like English for us a quarter and then a quarter off and then English for another quarter. So there's some changes that are taking place in order to not only allow every other day instruction, but they're partnered so that if you have, let's say I'm doing a, I'm teaching a a writing, a significant research project, okay, in, in English. And those students will be clustered. So if there would, if there would need to be a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of instruction, they can do that. They can have that take place. So those are some of the things that they've started to do in response to the feedback that has come in.
So, so the block scheduling is kind of being modified a little bit, tweaked a little bit is what you're trying to tell me?
And we're listening to the feedback from the community members where it's been, where there's been concerns. On the flip side, I would say that, that many of our, our secondary project-based classes, our sciences, our CTE classes, they're, for them to go back to like a, and we've explored what are called minis. So you'd have like a block split into two and you'd have essentially instead of a, and I'm going to just round, they're not quite 90 minutes or 80, you know, they're not quite 90, but I'm going to just, for the sake of math, round. So we've got 45-minute blocks, you know, and the 45-minute skinnies to make a block. We've looked at that. And that's something that some block schedules have. It's really hard to teach a science lesson with a lab in 45 minutes.
Correct.
You know?
Like clean up and everything.
So. So, so those are the things that are certainly coming into play in discussion. Um, those are things that, so um I, I will add, let David know that during um our next board meeting. When he's here as the secondary principal, that you may have some questions about the block schedule. And that's a great opportunity for him to have information prepared for you, that he can, so if you're, if there's specific things you wanna know, absolutely, he'll have that data for you.
I think we've had, we've been in blocks good enough with three years.
So last year was our first true year of implementation. The first year would have been halfway, there was COVID restrictions and it was.
Well, at least three years ago, we really discussed this. And I think when we discussed it at that time, we realized that we would go into this understanding that. We're not gonna do this for next hundred years necessarily. We're gonna start it and then we're gonna see where it goes. And I think we need to be fluid and, and open to whatever has to happen to make it work.
Absolutely.
Cause I think we all had a lot of questions. And no, it's good to ask questions, so. Any other questions? As we talk about. What you tell has put before us.
Did they, did they actually do a survey of the parents and students about the block scheduling? They did. There was the, the purchase, I was surprised it wasn't, there was not a lot of participation. But the survey went.
I think when you're talking about um management and scheduling classes and some of that kind of stuff. That could be a little more interesting, so in this case, I think. Um, it's very good to have the contribution from the parents, but from instructors and our administration. We need to look at it. I know that when we went through, I'm gonna uh say exactly what Rick did. We intended in no way for this to be absolutely the way it is for the next ten years. Um, we did know and we were basically set to be prepared to modify. Just to make it work better for the students, better for everybody, but. It was gonna be all of us trying to figure it out, not just um one entity.
Any other questions? I don't wanna gloss over this too quickly.
Anybody else?
Do we need to approve this?
Um, so what I would be looking for is, what I would be looking for is a motion to a direct administration with a target reduction of two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, you've heard the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Bruce makes a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Cheryl, seconds, is there any discussion?
I just like that. You have to start it somewhere.
Yep.
Right. We know for sure, we have to get a grip on this. The referendum that passed. Was not adequate just to fund us for a long time. We have to do our other part. Which is, we have to get a grip on it and you have to start somewhere.
I guess I have one last question then. So those, if you scroll back up, those are the cuts that you're recommending then? Is that's what you were doing?
Those are the, those are the considerations that I'm looking at right now. Um, so one of the things that um.
So what, what would be left then as far as for, for a language for them for?
Spanish.
So you're eliminating the German.
Correct.
But this is a consideration. Right now, we're just requesting a budget. Okay, we're not, we're not.
We haven't made the decision.
Making motions towards.
So, so here's, here's part of why this is here on the time, so let me, I'm gonna kind of. I will put last once um presentation on for next month, so I can walk through it again, but the. We legislatively have to follow a certain timeline. And, and the staff that we're talking about, that this could potentially impact our tenured staff. So then we have to follow a legislative timeline, which is part of why we're having these very, so. I, now I could come back to you and, and we could make a reduction and find out, wow, we have a lot more interest and then we, we hire back. But we can't, we can't miss, you have to do what you would recommend at the beginning. And if you add or change the recommendation, so for instance, if we would have a large population of, of EL students then. We have to respond to that.
So it's subject to change, that's all I'm gonna be sure of, so.
It is subject to change, but we do have to.
Budget reduction. The dollar, I don't have a problem with that, I just, I didn't know.
So no, these are not, this, these individuals, there's nothing that has happened from a board action perspective.
Okay.
But I, I also think um it's respectful, in my opinion, that individuals know what's being discussed.
Yep. And I just wanna make sure I, I clarify what I'm voting on, so I'm fine with it.
Hey, any other discussion? Are you any, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. It passes. That brings us up to policies.
Alright, so the policy committee met on.
February seventh.
Yeah, there we go, on February seventh. So um the first policy that was reviewed was the internet unacceptable use and safety policy. So as I click on the, the current policy, you're going to see um the changes that were recommended. Um, and again, the process that's used here is that um. The board, the, the board policy committee sits down and reviews the MSBA, the Minnesota School Board Association recommended policy changes. Um, and then we discuss, is it applicable to our school district? What are the implications? Um, and we move forward from there. Um. Where are my, there they are. Okay, so the biggest changes that are here. Um, is really as a result of legislative change last year. And you will recall in one of um Jonah Johnson's updates. Um, one of his last ones right before he left, he talked about the notification that took place for families with um. What the software is that we're using, what information it gathers, how it's used. That's all a result of legislative action and this policy incorporates that legislative action. So that's what, and this language is coming directly from MSBA. Okay, um, the next policy that was, so are, the recommendation of the policy committee is to accept the changes as they. Um, are identified. Um, there were no changes to the social media policy, and so um the recommendation would be to just maintain it as it is. Um, there were also no recommend, no recommended changes to policy five twenty-six, which is the hazing prohibition policy. Um, policy five, five thirty-one, the pledge of allegiance, there are no recommended changes to that policy as well. And then the final policy that was reviewed was policy five thirty-four, the unmade, unpaid meal charges policy. So I'm gonna pull that up for you, um, because there were a number of cha, things that we looked at. And some of those areas um had been in uh MSBA's policy and. Um, they were modified or altered in the paint, the pains of various schools policy. So um really what the policy committee and employees' policy committees members um step in and tell me if I'm misspeaking here, but. Um, really the recommendation was to align most closely again with MSBA. Um, because this, that was revised recently and, and reviewed recently. Um, as a result of the um. The Attorney General's ruling about um wa, and lunch shaming and how you can't, school districts. Um, can't identify and not, not feed kids. We, that by our practice has never been our practice, to my knowledge. Um, I guarantee my kids, when my kids were here, there was a negative lunch balance and they never had a meal taken away from them. That was for no other reason, but I didn't, you know, so I can speak firsthand to the fact that it's, it, it. We've never done that. Um, so the recommendation and that you're gonna see coming through is to um I. Pull in the MSBA language. Um, there was one area where um the, the, the board felt it was redundant and so. What they suggested is just to get rid of that first um letter B, um, so that it's just once a balance reduces, it reaches uh ten dollars. Families will receive an electronic notification. Um, and, and ultimately, uh, those are the changes that are, are recommended to come through. Uh, letter E um was a change. In MSBA, theirs was more specific than what we had, so we re, reincorporated MSBA's language. Um, beyond that, the only other one that was removed that was in MSBA's is reference to. Um, a food service provider, like a Tahoe or a, you know, an outside entity that provides your. Um, your food service program. Um, so again, there is no formal action that needs to take place. Policy member, committee. Policy committee members, anything that you would like to add or discuss?
I got a question regarding our school. Has it been much of an issue as far as the like one accounts? I mean, no. Nothing, uh. I mean, eventually gets paid, right? Or, or do we have a, a number of counts? And I, I don't care who or anything, but. We don't have a bunch of open accounts that.
We have a number. Mm-hmm. We do have a number of accounts that are open. Um, that has been something that we are watching and, and tracking this school year. We see.
Percentage of a number or?
I don't have a percentage. I, see, I can get that for you. Um, you know, those are things that I can, I can absolutely get and. I will, um, I will get that for you, but um a lot of what um we see more so. Issues this year than we have in years past, cause in years past, the last few years lunches were free. Um, and the balances that were incurred would have been for um. Students that were taking a second entree or, you know, those types of things. Um, this year we're seeing, um, because again lunches are now paid and they're not free universally. Um, we do have some families that are, are, that are carrying a balance. Um, and we've encouraged families to fill out free and reduced forms. Again, you know, there's, for whatever reason, sometimes families. Choose not to. Um, to my knowledge, we have never taken the steps of collections. And, and we just continue to try to work with families um and, and encourage students to. We try to keep students out of it, so we're having the conversations with the adults and the parents.
I understand, but it's nothing that's staggering. I mean, I, I just don't want it to be an epidemic or anything, that it's been an issue. I. I'm assuming you folks have may have talked about that in the past, haven't you?
Just ebbed and flowed a little bit.
It what?
It's kinda gotten higher and lower and moved around and sometimes it gets a little concerning, but. We, I would get through it. You know what I mean? There, there's nobody out there that doesn't wanna pay the bill when it's due. Um, if they're able, um, if I recall correctly, and you two might remember, and maybe even. Um, it happened, we had um parts of the community that stepped in and took care of some of that one time, because we got a little too far. So it. It wasn't, it worked, but we've always been able to marinate. Through these things, but it, sometimes it just gets a little harder. Other times, I don't know if it's related to economy or whatever else, but it just happens.
Well, right now, what it is related to is, I think, I, I do, my observation is that we had families who. Did not have to pay for lunches and now they are having to pay for lunches again. And the money that they would have in years past applied to school lunches is taken up elsewhere. Now that's reallocated back to, I gotta pay for school lunches again. That's just a natural change in. Um, having the free lunch program through COVID to not having the free lunch program. Now again, we've had a lot of conversation about um the legislature and whether universal meals will come back. You know, that's, I, I think there's a, a strong possibility that that comes back, so we'll be having a different conversation.
Any discussion? This is just the reading of the first reading?
That's the first read and then just as a note that all, um, all of these will be available for review in the district office. Um, that's why it's on first read at the business meeting and then the final action the following month, so it can be available for twenty days.
Takes us to D.
Alright, so we have two new employees who need um access to their magnify uh credit cards, so again. These are not new, um, they would replace. So Chris O'Brien's card would have replaced Matt Dickhousen's. And Ken Ozendorf's would replace Steve Gutten, so um.
All in favor, say aye. Employee appreciation.
Alright, so the month of February um had multiple employee appreciation opportunities. Um, so week, February sixth through tenth was food service appreciation, um, as we walk through. You know, the whole lunch account, um, our food service people do, they do great work. And I think one of my favorite things is to watch them interact with kids, especially I've had the opportunity to serve a couple of times at the elementary and. Kids are so grateful. They come in and they're just, they're smiling and they're excited to have their meals and. Um, and I know that our, our food service workers absolutely, um. They can make and break the, the morning and the lunch for kids, so I'm grateful for that support from our food service appreci, or from our food service staff. And then uh February twenty-second was school bus driver appreciation day. So you are going to see um our food service staff and our pains of motor and transfer uh staff and drivers. That are um identified and uh we, uh, again, I wanted to say thank you, um, you know, I've told a number of people. I remember my school bus driver for years and he was at my graduation party. I mean, Sam drove me, I was the last one off the bus, I was on the bus for an extended amount of time. Bus drivers make a big, they're, they're important people, so. Thank you to our, our bus drivers and the staff that coordinate our routes and do all of that work, so. Um, just an, an acknowledgement and appreciation in addition to our school board. So that's just an informational item.
Okay, upcoming meetings.
The only piece I really wanted to point out is that our, our work session is on Monday, March thirteenth. Um, Tuesday, the fourteenth is the um uh precinct offices for township. Or township collections. We had to move it, so that's why, but um. Our next meeting will be Monday, March sixth, thirteenth at six.
Hey, bringing us to the end of our meeting, is there a motion to? All in favor, say aye.